Either silent or off. And we'll ask the planning commission, have you reviewed the minutes from the last meeting? Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move with approval.
Motion for Mr. Hanson, Mr. Fitzgerald second. All in favor? Four, zero. Approved.
Chris, do you have anything? Would you have any announcement?
Turn the microphones on.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if you will, turn your microphones on.
I just had one announcement. These applications, the recommendation from the planning commission will be forwarded to the board commissioner meeting at 2:00 PM on June 13th back in this room.
They'll be June 13th?
At 2:00 PM.
At 2:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
If you have, if you have an application that's being heard today, you will be required to be here June 13th at 2:00 PM for the final decision on these. We're a recommending board to the county commissioners and what we do today will be forwarded on to that meeting. Do you have the first application?
Mr. Chair, if I could add one thing?
Yes.
Just a reminder, with you serving as the chair, you'll only be voting in the event of the time.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have the first application?
Mr. Chairman, the next, these first two applications coincide with the B1 or B2 zoning and the special use permit. And I thought I would, if it's okay with the board, that I would read both of them and run like we did last month.
That's fine.
Okay. Application 2023-06Z, application by Jonathan Jones requesting to rezone approximately 4.728 acres from B1 general business district to B2 highway business district for a proposed commercial development. Property is located in landlot 1057, District 3, Section 3. It's on the north side of Gullage Road and Old Cartersville Road. It's in Commission Post 4. It's been recommended approval with five printed stipulations. And then 2023-04SUP, application by Jonathan Jones requesting a special use permit in concurrence with the 2023-06Z commercial development rezoning to construct a self-storage facility with onsite parking. Property is located in landlot 1057, District 3, Section 3, north of Gullage Road and Old Cartersville Road, Commission Post 4. The SUP is recommended for approval with three stipulations with two amendments by staff. Amendment to the first one is owner developer agrees to operate gate hours only from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the second one is a replacement that says owner developer agrees the proposed buildings will meet corridor overlay architectural requirements including building elevations. And the applicants are present. We have had numerous calls, emails, and concerns on this one from adjoining property owners. And some of that's probably in your packet. And the applicant is present.
Applicant, will you come forward, please? The applicant will have 15 minutes total to review, to present his case, either one person or 15 people. It'll be a 15-minute timeline. And if there's questions among the commission board or the planning board, that will not be held against those 15 minutes. And the same 15 minutes will be given to the opposition in the same manner.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jonathan Jones, and I'm here representing the proposed rezoning and special use permit for a storage facility. To get you familiar, this is at the intersection of Ivy Gullage or Gallaudet Gullage Road now in Old Cartersville, behind the Grants Gas Station and adjacent to the daycare that's there. To the north of us is a subdivision that this, this same developer on developing, built, called West Ridge. It's multiple phases. And then, of course, north of that is Adney Elementary. The, the proposed use would be a, a storage facility. We agree to meet the corridor overlay for the architectural controls. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulations and the SUP stipulations. He's in agreement with both. We did have one question that probably Mr. Jones will have to help us with. There was, or possibly he's on him. Number five reads that the provide inter parcel access along Old Cartersville to parcels 83, da-da-da and 83, da-da, which is the daycare and the gas station. So totally understand the, the concept of inter parcel connectivity. The daycare, I have spoken with that owner and answered some of his questions and concerns. If we were to tie this development into his development, it would go into his playground. So I don't know that, that that's beneficial, and I don't think he wants that. Secondly, there is a joint driveway already at Gullage Road that is the access point for Grants Gas Station and for the, the, the storage facility, proposed storage facility. I don't know if that would be considered inter parcel connectivity or not, but they, they are using a joint driveway. You know, a storage facility is typically surrounded by fencing for security purposes. So in the event that you tried to create inter parcel connectivity with the gas station, you would have to have another gate system there that would be regulated like the front gate. And I don't know that it behooves the gas station nor the, the patrons of the storage facility to have what consider the inter parcel connectivity at that location. But, you know, we're more than willing to work with staff, however. But that, that's, that's the only question slash concern that we would have as it relates to all of the zoning steps. You know, this project is, is at a commercial nucleus that, that I zoned back in 2006. It was intended to be a retail center at that location. It's probably more demand now for, for storage facility considering all of the, the homes that have been built in that northern area of the county. And I know that there's a, quite a deficiency as it relates to storage facilities. I think that the donation of right-of-way, which is probably about 12 foot along the frontage of Gullage is, is fine with my client. So I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that are concerns you may have about this zoning.
Does the planning board have any questions? Commission board?
I can hear you.
So as far as, I mean, I'm not the engineer, I was just asking, as far as that little piece, that box in between the store and the daycare that's going to be left?
Yes, sir.
I just looked it up. He owns that same piece.
That's correct.
Do you know what his plan is on that? Is that for the, I mean, for the inner parcel?
Yeah, I understand. That would probably be a more ideal scenario. That way you could get from, out on, straight out on to Cartersville Road that way. Right now, he said his only intent for that, and it's not, nothing in the immediate future, is to do a strip center. But he does, that's not his business. That's not what he does. And he's, he's had it listed, and he hasn't had a whole lot of interest in it. So I think it'll probably remain zone B1 commercial until he can find a user buyer. But we've had it, at one time, three different one acre lots. And he said most likely he would try to package it and sell it to one party that would buy all of the land and do like a retail center at that, at that way, like a strip center or something. But there's not a defined use as it stands yet.
I looked it up there. Looked at that box, including the right-of-way, so I don't know if that's what the right-of-way would be up there. Did look at that about an acre and a quarter, that whole box that's left. If you took out the right-of-way, how much land would be left? And would you have to put a pond in? And I mean, I was just thinking outside of...
Yeah, you're right. It's three 30,000 square foot lots, I believe, because I think that's the minimum allowed for B1. So, I mean, the distance between property line to property line through there is probably, well, it's as wide as the daycare. So, you know, it's probably a couple hundred feet. So you could probably end up with 120-foot long retail center with parking out in the front. But he, he doesn't have an immediate plan by any means. He hadn't even asked me to lay it out for anything, so.
So is that the parking lot of the Grants there that comes out? Is that set up for a unit connection to the revenue? Is that why I'm trying to say that?
Yes, Commissioner, I believe back in the 2006 timeframe when this went through the rezoning, if you looked at the plan for that, it was essentially set up as an inter parcel access coming from where the daycare site was, all the way over towards Gullage Road. And the intent of the stipulation that was provided, it wasn't necessarily to connect into the storage facility. Again, that's private, that has gates. It was more basically provide that frontage connection adjacent to Old Cartersville Road.
Are there any further questions from the commission board?
So this backs up to the daycare? And is there going to be like, will people be able to see through the fence to the daycare, to the playground and things like that where kids can do?
Yes, ma'am. Our site sits about 12 vertical feet above the daycare playground. And then our intent, I know that the zoning stipulation denotes a six-foot black vinyl fence. My client intends to do an eight-foot with safety wiring on, on the top of it. So the top of the fence would roughly be 20 feet above their, their, their playground area. So that was one of the concerns with the daycare owner was is they're going to be able to look down upon the project where actually they're, it's going to be elevated above them. So I can't speak for him, but he seemed to be more comfortable with that concept than he did if you were at the playground looking down onto the property. So it, it will be above the daycare. Now, it will be most likely visible from Ivy Gullage. You'll get to see the fronts of the buildings, but you won't be able to see any of the parking. It's all self-contained in the very back. The intent was to do a vinyl fence. If, if the screen sliding is something that, that staff or, or board commissioners would like to add to it, I think we'd be more than amenable to that so that it's more of a solid surface or whatever.
I think that would be preferable, maybe not the whole fence.
Yeah.
At least where the joints of daycare.
I got you.
Because first, like I got my grandkids out there playing.
Want to look through?
It necessarily won't, people may be able to watch.
It makes sense. I, I think, yeah, we're, we're amenable to that concept if you want to amend the stipulations, assuming we get recommendation for approval.
I got a question, John.
Yes, sir.
Looks like the site layout here has got some parking in the back.
Yes, sir.
And it's going back up next to that subdivision.
Yes, sir.
What kind of lighting are you looking at? Is it going to be disruptive or?
It'll be cast down all, all, every lighting on this project will be a cast-down style lighting. There's a 40-foot buffer that's required by zoning all along that entire property line. And nothing will be directed towards the fence. It'll all be directed to the interior for safety purposes only. And if, once again, if staff wanted to dictate down casting interior lighting, that would be something we'd be more than amenable. No, there, there's no need or desire to have any lighting that would protrude outside this property. It's merely for safety when people are there after hours or whatever they can see to get in and out.
Are there any further questions? Is there anybody else in favor of this development that wants to speak? Is anyone in opposition to this development? Seeing none. Is there someone that would like to give a motion on this development? And if, if you would, if you would like to include or had you rather, Chris, have the eight-foot chain link fence with a wire with a screen along the playground and the exterior lighting? Would you like that included in it, or would that be done in plan review?
We would, we would recommend if they're agreeable that we had put a six-foot fence, but it can be amended to say that it could be a, to eight or eight-foot fence. They're suggesting with the safety wiring across the top and that it would be a screening on the side of the daycare.
Okay. Would whoever does the motion, would you like to include that in your motion? And it would be number six, an eight-foot chain link fence?
Mr. Chairman, we would, we would just recommend that it be under the SUP.
Okay.
With the stipulation number four amended.
Okay.
And also just, just to keep in mind that we did stipulate in the zoning and the special use that they would, the development would be subject to the corridor overlay district since Old Cartersville and Gullage are not in that corridor, but they would be subject to it, which would require the box lighting to shield from the residents behind there. And on the rear, it is a 40-foot minimal buffer next to the subdivision.
So that would be taken care of with overlay? Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
Question on, on the stipulation number five, is that, are we still in there? Just like it's written?
Okay.
I'll move with approval.
Okay. Approval by Mr. Hanson, do I have a second? With the five stipulations.
Second.
And the SUP.
All right, have a motion, second to approve. Do I have a vote? That would be three, zero, and one approved.
Mr. Chairman, the actual special use permit will have to be voted on separately.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one would be 2023-04-SUP. I need a motion on that.
Move with approval.
Motion approved by Mr. Hanson. Do I have a second?
We amended eight-foot fence.
Okay.
What goes with that, the wire and top and their, I think, the point of interest, what about those?
What about those slats or inserts you put in a chain link fence to block out everything? Are those very durable, or would that be something feasible for this?
I think that's something that we would definitely look at during the process, but I know that there's different screening devices.
Can you do that through plan review or when they do it now?
We can, if, if it's, if it's voted on with the screening of daycare with the fence, or the fence, the screening of the, on the daycare side, we will like to have a little flexibility so we can get the best material up there. If you put slats, then we're limited just to the slats.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll work with that one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you would just clarify for the purpose of the SUP, that there is nobody else wanting to speak in favor or in opposition for the SUP that hasn't already spoken in regard to the primary zoning case?
Okay. Dropping back to 2023-04-SUP, is there anyone else or anyone that would like to speak in favor of this zoning? This is special use permit that goes along with the 2023-06-Z. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to it? All right, thank you. Since there's no opposition, do I have a motion to 2023-04-SUP with the addition of the eight-foot fence with the wire and the screening that would be taken care of during plan review? Mr. Hanson, do you still stand with your motion?
I do. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, just to clarify, there are three listed steps recommended by staff, and you had mentioned a fourth step regarding the fence.
Yes.
And Mr. Hanson, can you just clarify your motion for me?
In that motion, go ahead and make your four stipulations as stated.
Thank you.
Four stipulations as stated, okay. Is there a second? Ms. Fitzgerald seconds. Do I have a vote? Be three, zero, and one in favor. All right. The next one is going to be application 2023-07-Z. Mr. Jones with the lead engineer, do you have that? What's that?
Are you, you mean to breathe it into the record?
Yes.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Next application is 2023-07Z, application by Jonathan Jones requesting to rezone 24.53 acres from R2 suburban residential district to I1 light industrial district, which would be 21.73 acres, and B2 highway business district, which would be 1.82, 80 acres for industrial and commercial uses, including a convenience store. Property is located in landlot 232, District 19, Section 3. It's on the south side or southwest corner of Rockmart Highway, US 278 and Goldmine Road intersection. The proposed project site address is 358 Goldmine Road. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval with three printed stipulations, and we have also had several inquiries that is opposed and has concerns on this one.
Mr. Jones?
One, one bit of clarification. Chris, you had noted 21.73, but I think it's 22.73. You probably can't read my chicken scratchy, but it's 22.73 and then 1.80. So on the corner, this, just to get you oriented, this is where Goldmine comes into 278. It's on the northwestern corner there. It's a large parcel of land. It's got a, a small creek that starts on the property about midways and then ultimately drains towards and under 278. The intent is, is on that corner for a B1 zoning to do a gas station. The, the owner of this is Arpit, which is the same people who own Owl Store there at Crossroads at Roses. The intent is to build a very much like facility here. It'll be catered to the, the crowd for, for food and such as that, along with, for, for, you know, gas services and, and things like that. When you leave Rockmart, there is not a gas station until you get basically an Alice that I'm aware of. So I do think the community out here, especially people who are traveling to and from work, this would be an ideal location. It is, is at an intersection where, you know, you've got a lot of traffic counts, median cut, and, you know, basically good access to the property. The remainder of the property is intended to be built with office-type warehouses where, you know, a contractor may have, you know, office space in the front and some warehouse storage in the back. It, it's open honestly to different customers and clients. There's not been anybody yet sign up per se for any of the product, but it, it basically would be like its own small industrial type project, which in, in my opinion, we'd meet all the commercial industrial we can get in this county. The, the frontage along 278, it's, it's got about 718 foot of actual frontage you'd be visible, and there's a 50-foot setback along that, that corridor there. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulations and is in agreement with those, and I'll be happy to answer any digital questions you might have about the project or property.
Does anyone on the zoning board have any questions?
What is the startup date on this project?
The, the gas station will probably come rather quickly if approved. You know, I would say that construction by the first part of next year is probably realistic. The remainder of the development, I think that'll be more along a supply and need or a demand type thing. If approved, they'll begin the marketing to try to, you know, secure some people that might be interested in either leasing or buying or doing a lease-to-buy type option on these buildings. You know, there's a lot of people that, that would like to have their own warehouses. Maybe they're operating out of their, their, their own property now. Maybe they're in an area too small or, or too dense, and, and they would like to have it to where they could come in and out here a little bit more freely than being, you know, in a contained like city atmosphere. So I, I do think there'll be a demand for it, but the, the timing on the industrial will be 100% on the demand.
So initially just the gas station?
Yeah, the gas station, their intent is to move forward as, as quickly as it makes sense. Obviously, they haven't spent any money doing all the studies and stuff that they would, they would have to, so there'll be some time invested in the due diligence and studies and, and all of that. But ultimately, they would like to have that facility open as, as soon as it, you know, can be done properly.
Anyone else have a question? Okay. Is anyone else that likes, would like to speak in favor of this development? Seeing none, is there anyone that is in opposition to this zoning? Board of Commissioners, do y'all have any questions? Hearing none. Would like to have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the three listed stipulations.
Second.
That is, okay. Have a motion to approve with the three listed stipulations. That is, okay. Have a motion to approve with the three listed stipulations. Good. All in favor? Okay, that's going to be approved, three, zero, and one.
Okay. Next application, 2023-08Z, application by Jonathan Jones requesting to rezone 1.381 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District into an amended B1 General Business District. Originally was, uh, B2 on the application. It's been amended to B1. Uh, this would be for the expansion of a previously zoned commercial property for the proposed de- development of a gas station. The property is located in Land Lot 1112, District 2, Section 3, southwest corner of Ridge Road and Hiram Douglasville Highway, State Route 92. Site address is 8328 Ridge Road, and it's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with, uh, we have four stipulations. One is, number four was an addition. This is a stipulation that was also placed on the adjoining property to the east that the same owner developers has, it was to install, owner developer agrees to install a six-foot chain-link fence along the southern property line. Applicant is present. I've had no, uh, noted opposition.
How tall is that fence? How tall?
It was six feet.
Six.
All right. Mr. Jones, are you ready?
You guys haven't seen me for a while. You thought I quit, huh? Um, I'm here, uh, this is also an Arpit project. Um, the, the corner there was, uh, it was already zoned and, and we've been working, uh, with both G dot and P dot, um, for a project at that location. I think that this property was, was added on, uh, if I'm not mistaken, at the recommendation or request for staff so that we can move the driveway entry further away from 92. And so that was really the intent of adding the property. Um, and, uh, we are, um, we, staff also wanted us to provide interparcial connectivity with Mr. Smith's property, who is to the south. Um, my client is, uh, definitely amenable to, uh, adhering to, uh, Mr. Smith's request for the fence. And, um, I think that he also wanted to get some, uh, he had mentioned Leland Soprisas, but I told him that staff probably would want, uh, Cryptomeria planted along there as an additional buffer. Um, I'm sure Mr. Smith will, will, will speak on that, but, uh, we'd be amenable to, to meeting his request as it relates to that. So, uh, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you might have about this zoning.
Is, is there any questions from the planning board? Is there anyone else that wants to speak in behalf?
Chairman, I'm Jim Smith.
Uh, if you will, Mr. Smith, sign in there, please. All right.
I own the property and live just adjacent to this, uh, uh, property in, in, uh...
Now you're speaking in favor of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have some stipulations that, uh, Jonathan's already, actually, he's already covered them, but I just wanted to make sure they were a matter of record.
Right.
A six-foot, uh, chain-link fence along the, uh, southern, uh, side of that property.
It would actually be on the northern border of your property, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, sir. And, uh, was, uh, privacy slats and liked to have a couple of strands of barbed wire at the top of those, if that's, uh, amenable with, uh, the, uh, Mr. Dobbins, who's a friend of mine. As a matter of fact, we've known him for 20 years. He may not be a friend after I leave.
You know, some type of wire, Jim, I don't know the barbed wire.
Mr. Dobbins, if you would, please, uh, let him finish and then, then I'll bring you up and you can speak to this.
But, uh, that's, that and, uh, the, uh, six-foot evergreens at Cryptomeria at Loblawli, uh, planted on four-foot centers is my, my only, uh, request. Outside of that, I have no objection to the, to the zoning application.
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of, of this zoning? Mr. Dobbins, you can, you can come up and speak and sign in, please.
We're not opposed to the fence. Uh, I don't know that barbed wire is the right answer.
If, if you will, state your name.
Terry Dobbins.
Terry Dobbins.
And, uh, like I said, we're not opposed to the fence for Jim. Don't know about the barbed wire. That's a good, good thing to have there at the convenience store. It might be a better option than that. I don't know what we get with Jonathan and Chris and see. As far as the slats, I think it's a better fabric thing now, aren't they, Chris, for blocking view, you know? But I don't see the sense in doing the fabric and the bushes. They both encompass the same thing, you know, either, either or. So, I think would be agreeable. I mean, we'd do what we gotta do. I don't see where you need both. If you're putting something in the fence to block it, why you need plants as well. That's my only, only question.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify and make sure, uh, the B1 zoning adjacent to the Mr. Smith's residential property, there is a required 25-foot buffer. Uh, it sounds like that what happened on the adjoining property was the fence would be along the southern property line against Mr. Smith, and then you'd have the 25 buffer back on the applicant's property. And it sounded more like they were asking for more of an evergreen that may be above what's required in our buffer standards with four-foot centers, uh, on center and would Cryptomeria and Leland specific.
Do you remember what was required on the previous zoning because this is going to be a continuous, you, you would want it continuous, I would think.
It was not a condition for the buffer.
It was not a condition at that time.
On the previous zoning, only for a six-foot chain-link fence along the southern property line.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think Mr. Dobbins mentioned something that he didn't want barbed wire. What is another type of wire that could go across the top of that that would meet Mr. Smith's requirements?
Um, well, I, I've seen wiring that, that, uh, folds over to the property and it, and it's a, it's just wire. Um, and it, it bends over it, but it don't have barbs or razors. And the, the purpose is, is so somebody couldn't climb up it and over it because it bows inward.
Right.
Uh, that's more of a safety feature. Um, keep a kid from climbing it and getting hung up on barbed wire. If it's just wire, it's just wire. So I've seen four strands of wire on a, uh, counter lever type arm. That's probably the safest option, um, if, if Mr. Smith's insisting on a, some sort of safety barrier. But, uh, that's, that's about the only option I've seen other than razor wire or barbed wire, and I call it a safety fencing.
And I can understand his, uh, point as far as the plantings because this actual section is going to be more visible to his residents compared to what the previous zoning was. What, what would you, what are you suggesting to do to, to give him either the plantings or the, uh...
Screening.
The screening?
The, the benefit to the screening is it's immediate. It's, it's there. It, it virtually is a, a six-foot wall where you can't see through it. Um, you know, it's got to be maintained because over time it'll need to be replaced. The trees initially, uh, even at four-foot on center, you know, they're going to be fairly narrow and it'll take probably a year or so for them to fill out to where they truly become a buffer. Um, I do tend to agree with Terry that one and the same are, are, they're both buffering the property. Um, but for an immediate buffer, definitely the screening on the fence, in my opinion, is, is, is way more advantageous for an immediate buffer.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Jones? Does the Planning Commission, I mean, uh, Board of Commissioners have a question from the applicants? Hearing none. Is there in, anyone in opposition to this? Okay, I want to ask, hearing none, I want to ask Mr. Smith. Had you rather have the, if you would, come up here, sir?
I, I don't, uh, I don't think that I would have a problem with either or.
Okay. Well, the thing about it is what he's saying is...
I understand what he's saying.
The, the, the fabric would be in an immediate buffer.
That's correct.
Where it would take time and might be a longer-lasting buffer with a planting, but not necessarily. And which would you rather have? It doesn't matter to you?
It doesn't matter. I, I'll take, I, I would want one of the two, though.
Okay.
Could, could your property be seen over the six-foot fence?
Probably so.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
I believe it.
So, where they, uh, they have a proposed, uh, access road that comes in just short of the Greystone, uh, traffic light there. Uh, those vehicles that's going to work every morning down Ridge Road, those lights are gonna be, they may like to gonna be shining in my breakfast room. I don't know what traffic count is on Ridge Road, but it must seem like it's 2,000.
It's high.
So it would seem that these, uh, either Leland Soprisas or Loblawli would be a better-suited thing for your...
Cryptomeria would probably be a better source.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If there are no other further questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Robson a question. On these, uh, projects like this with this chain-link fence, I know one of the previous ones had a vinyl cover chain-link fence. Do we suggest that on all of these projects or is it, was it just that one? Maybe it looks a lot nicer and lasts, makes it last a lot longer.
Yeah, the only thing on this one to keep in mind is this is the third track of overall development. It's already been taking place, and the other two pieces has already locked in stipulations. Anything you put in place today will not impact the other tracks where the actual store's gonna be. It would only impact where the entrance of the drive comes in. Uh, so just, I just wanted, you know, to let you know that that might not be consistent if there's a lot of change. Uh, they are required that 25-foot buffer with, and, and those trees, it's mentioned as a part of that requirement. Uh, under the zoning ordinance, uh, the, the fence would be just a continuation from what was previously stipulated on the other tracks. But I do understand in this particular case from Mr. Smith that when that entrance on that's, in that area is where the cars are turning in. So that's why, what I'm hearing is there may be some screening on that fence to block some of the car lights when they turn in to the actual, uh, store.
So you're, you're saying the, uh, fence is already stipulated in previous zoning?
Yeah, this just, I can't enforce whatever y'all put in today on the remaining track. I can only do it on this piece.
What about addition, what about additional screening and a cantilever wire at the top? Is that something we can add to it?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, on this piece, not on the others?
Yes, just this piece. Mr. Jones?
Uh, my client is amenable to it being black vinyl coated. Um, I realize that we can't amend something that was from previous, but their intent is that entire fence through there will be black vinyl chain-link fence. So, maybe put a little bit of ease, but you're right. It's, should be mandated because we all know what regular chain-link looks like in about five years. So, yeah, I, I would think that that should be a mandate anyway. Um, so I just wanted to add that to it.
Okay.
Um, one other thing I wanted to add is, uh, the, the, the fence fabric would help block some of that lighting immediately, um, whereas trees may or may not. So, um, I know he's amenable to either one. If it were my property, I personally would probably want the screening of the fabric. Uh, it's something that can be, you know, fixed and over time, whereas, you know, what if a couple of the trees die? You know, it, it's just, it's a different type buffer, is all it is, so.
Okay. Do I hear a motion of the...
First of all, I'd like to ask Mr. Smith if he has a particular one he would rather have. I know you said either one, but...
Yeah, the screening would probably be a better suit of my conditions than the trees.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, so do I hear a motion with the four, now four, uh, stipulations with the fourth one being the owner developer agrees to install a six-foot black chain-link fence on a property with the, uh, safety wire across the top?
Fifty foot.
What's that?
It was fifty foot length.
It will be the length of the property.
Yeah.
On this particular zoning, not, not a, even though he said that they plan to do it on all of it, all we're concerned is, is the, uh, the, the buffer that is adjoining Mr. Smith on this particular property. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve with three listed stipulations plus the four stipulation to, uh, add a screen to the black, well, to, uh, uh, state that the, uh, chain-link fence will be a black vinyl fence with a screen and a cantilever, uh, safety wire at the top.
All right. I have a motion from Mr. Aston and a second from Mr. Hanson. I need a vote, please. All in favor? That'll be three, zero, and one approved.
Next application, 2023-09Z, application by Jonathan Jones requesting to rezone one acre from R2 Suburban Residential District to B1. This is another amended down from B2. So this is to B1 General Business District, and this would be for the expansion of a previously zoned commercial property for the addition of an existing gas station. Property is located in Land Lot 1034, District 19, Section 3. It's on the north side of Buck Cannon Highway, east of Mulberry Rock Road and Buck Cannon Highway intersection. intersection. Uh, site address is 9600 Buchanan Highway, it's in Commission Post 2. Uh, staff has just, uh, recommended approval with one condition, and we've had no calls with concerns or opposition.
All right. This application for, applicant present. Mr. Jones?
Done after this one, I promise. So this is, um, likewise, it, it's a fill-in property to something that he already owned and zoned. Um, to get you familiar, this is Owl Store at the Crossroads. Uh, if anybody has been to Owl Store at Crossroads, especially in the morning, you know it's an extremely busy store, which is a good thing. The bad thing is it oftentimes has a lot of traffic issues with people trying to get in and out. So the intent and, and proposal for this one would be to, um, add a building to the back of the store, so you'll have a two-way entry now to the store, some diesel pumps that'll be basically roughly where the, the out parcel's sitting. Um, there'll be another G dot full access entry at that location, and the, the entry that comes off of, of 101, uh, will now loop and go by the existing building and tie to the new parking lot. So you will essentially have 360-degree access all the way around the store, hopefully improving in, ingress and egress, parking, uh, for all the patrons. This is, uh, without a doubt, I think anybody who lives in that area knows that this is the most popular store out there, and, um, uh, I think he's, uh, showed great investment in the area by spending the money to, to improve it and to, uh, make it better for all the patrons. Um, so, uh, there'll be, uh, an out parcel, uh, on the west side of the existing stream, and there'll be an out parcel on the east side of the existing stream. The existing stream is just east of the parcel that we're zoning. Um, so when it's all said and done, there'll be a, a possibility for two, uh, additional out parcels. Uh, they don't have anybody lined up yet or any intention for those parcels. Uh, there'll be one master detention facility. Um, the existing septic system will be removed and replaced with a brand-new septic system. The existing detention pond will be reduced slightly to allow for the entry to come in, and then a master detention pond will be built adjacent to the stream, uh, and discharged directly into the creek, so, uh, it, it'll be better for any of the adjacent properties so that no runoff will actually go into them. Um, and, uh, I think that's it. My client has, has reviewed the zoning stipulations, is amenable to it. Um, we request, uh, your recommendation for approval, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions about this zoning.
Anybody have a question of Mr. Jones? Seeing none, board of commissioners? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wants to speak against this application? Seeing none. I, I can honestly say I've never been by the store that I, that it has not been busy, so it's, I'm sure this could be a, a good thing. Okay, do I hear a motion from the board?
I make a motion to approve the one stipulation.
Motion to approve from Mr. Ashton with one listed stipulation, seconded by Mr. Hanson. Do I have a vote? Ms. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2023-12Z application by Stanton Porter requesting to rezone 3.97 acres from R2 suburban residential district to B2 highway business district to develop a convenience store with gas pumps and retail commercial space. Property is located in landlots 976 and 969, District 2, Section 3. It's the northeast corner of Hiram Douglasville Highway, also known as State Route 92, and Morningside Drive. The address of the property is 2883 and 2925 Hiram Douglasville Highway and 41 Morningside Drive. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with six, uh, stipulations, and the applicant, uh, representative is present, and we have not had any concerns or opposition on this application.
This applicant present.
My name is Megan Wyatt. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant Stanton Porter. Um, this is presently, uh, it's a corner lot, it's presently zone R2. We are wanting it to be zone B2. That would be in accordance with the future land use. The applicant is wanting to develop a convenience store with gas pumps and a retail commercial space. The development itself is, the structure itself is almost 7,500 square feet, um, so there will be some retail space in there. It's a corner lot, just under four acres at the corner of, uh, 92 and Morningside Drive. There will be two, um, two entrances to the development. One will be on Morningside Drive and the other will be on 92. That's a right in and right out, so anyone heading towards Morningside would not be able to make a left-hand turn. Rather, they could turn onto Morningside and then turn into the development. Um, there is an out parcel. The applicant has no immediate plans to develop that parcel as of right now. Um, and there are six, uh, six conditions that have been recommended, and the applicant is agreeable with all of those.
Is there any questions from this board? Think, uh, what about board of commissioners? Is there a question?
What's the plan for the additional retail? And are you planning to have co-ams?
Are we planning to have what? I'm sorry.
Co-ams?
Not to my knowledge. I would have to check with the applicant about that. Um, but as for the retail space, I mean, I guess it could really be, you know, it could be restaurants or really anything. Um, they haven't really nailed that part down yet, but I don't think that they're in a super big hurry to develop it, so I think that's something they're still working on.
Would we have, and this is a question to, I guess, Jason, would we have to go back and run through additional retail or would it just be open to any retail whatsoever?
I believe, uh, I, I don't believe the zoning is site-specific for a particular retail, Mr. Robinson?
That's correct. And with the B2 district, it would allow any to, any B2 use?
Yeah, so the answer is any uses permitted by the district are allowable without returning for any additional approvals.
Well, I would certainly request that we do not allow co-ams on this property.
Can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'd like to request we do not have co-ams. Would that be a stipulation that co-ams allow on this property? Coin operated amusement machines?
I don't think that those are in the plans anyway, so I think that they would be agreeable
Is there any questions from the board of commissioners?
Chris, could you, uh, since I don't have it memorized, state what other connection with, uh, genius question? What else?
Yeah, I, this time I'll just give some examples instead of going through the whole thing. Uh, you're looking at, it could be automotive equipment rental, it could be art dealer, uh, nail salons, fitness insurance offices, florists. It could have a restaurant, uh, it could have some general automotive repair, it's office space, uh, pet store, things like that.
Are there any further questions from the board of commissioners or this board? Is there anyone else who wish, wishes speaking in favor of this development? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this zoning? Seeing none? Do I have a motion from this board?
Motion to approve with the six stipulations.
Plus, no coin operated-
Plus, yeah, okay. Plus the no coin operated machines. I guess that'll be number seven.
Gaming machines.
Yeah, gaming machines. That'll be number seven stipulation.
Now, you, you're saying vending machines or the gambling machines? Because a vending machine can be a coke machine or anything like that.
Gambling, GA.
Gambling machines, okay.
Just to be clear, it's, uh, coin-operated amusement machine. They're regulated by the Georgia Lottery Commission. Those are the type of machines I believe that, uh, that Commissioner Galloway was referring to.
Okay, yes, we want to make sure and specify that.
Specify that in the motion.
Okay.
All right.
So have a motion to approve with the six listed stipulations and the seventh stipulation, no coin-operated gaming or amusement machines. Do I have a motion from Mr. Ashton and a second from Mr. Hanson? Is that right?
I made a motion.
You made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. And then the second, Mr. Ashton?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, to approve? I mean, to take a vote to approve? Okay, there'd be three, zero, and one.
What about number seven?
Yeah, it was, I, I listed number seven.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Application 2023-02LUP, application by Tabitha Farr requesting a land use permit on five acres within the R2 suburban residential district to allow for an accessory structure to serve as a residential business, providing professional counseling services. Property is located in landlot 986, District 2, Section 3, at the southwest corner of the intersection of Davis Road and McClung Road, uh, south of Rich Davis Road. The address is 45 Davis Road, it's in Commission Post 3, and staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and applicant is present, and we've had no, uh, noted opposition or concerns.
I'm Tabitha Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Here to seek your recommendation for, a recommendation of, to approve for a special use permit for an accessory, uh, building for a home-based business.
Okay, and with the home-based business, you were wanting to do what now?
Counseling services. I'm a therapist.
Counseling services, okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you, is there anything like, further you'd like to add?
Well, I've never done this before, so-
All right.
I figure you'll ask me what I need to speak to.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Robinson, this is a land use permit, right? Not a special use.
That's correct. It's a land use permit.
It's a two-year permit?
It's a two-year permit.
Commission board?
Well, this is my neighbor. And, uh, so I know they take very good care of their property and that they'll have a look nice. I think you already have something there. So, um, how many people do you anticipate, uh, coming in and out on a weekly basis? I, I would, uh, assume that it would be fairly low, uh, or maybe not. People like I'm a compliment, or should that come in? Or you're not the counselor?
I'm the only counselor, yes, ma'am. So my schedule is to allow for uptake, up to 18 hours, um, of contact hours, um, on, on my property. However, since COVID, a lot of the, some people prefer online, so not all of those 18 hours will necessarily be people coming, uh, in and off and on my property. Um, so six per day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, with the latest one, the earliest being 9:00 AM and the latest being 7:30 PM. And they'll be timed to come in, one comes in as the other one is, is leaving. And I also have the, uh, home-based business and the affidavits, so I understand that no more than two people per hour on my property, and it wouldn't exceed that.
Ms. Farr, are you connected with any 501(c)(3) church or?
No, sir.
Or independent?
All independent.
Is there a way to make a stipulation that she, uh, her husband is the first client?
Are there any further questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in favor of this zoning? Is there anyone in opposition to this zoning? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Ms. Fitzgerald. Do I hear a second? Mr. Hanson? With-
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman.
The one listed stipulation.
With one stipulation.
Okay. With the one listed stipulation. All right. Um, can I have a vote, please? For approval. All right, that'd be three, zero, and one. To approve. All of, uh, ma'am, make sure to be here. It's gonna be June 13th at 2:00 PM. All applicants that, uh, had applications today, make sure and be here, because that's when the vote would, to approve or deny will be done, June 13th at 2:00 PM during the commission meeting. And that's all of the zonings. Now we have a ordinance text amendment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The final, uh, final item today is to hold a public hearing for a zoning ordinance text amendment. Uh, Paulding County, Georgia will consider zoning ordinance text amendments to Title I Administration, Title II Zoning, and the appendix of the Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County, Georgia.
And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll, I'll open with comments from the staff. Members of the commission, this, uh, these amendments, uh, really, they're really twofold. Uh, first off, on the legal side, uh, the General Assembly passed a couple of House bills last year requiring that all counties and cities update their zoning ordinances so that they're consistent. so that they're consistent with new provisions of the zoning procedures law. What you have before you is a combination of updates to accomplish that, and Ms. Lippman is going to give you some detail regarding some of the other finer points that are unrelated to the House bill updates. But in sum, under Georgia law, we have to make sure that our ordinance now requires that any standards or factors that y'all consider, or some of the other boards consider, zoning board of appeals, Development Waiver Review Committee, when there are factors that you weigh your decisions on, that those factors have to be printed out and available for the public to review that are in attendance. So that is one of the requirements you'll see. Another requirement is that the new law, the proposed amendments make clear that the owner of the property, or the owner of property that is going to be subject to a variance, they are also required to receive notice. A lot of times in the past, the law specifically said it was the adjoining property owners, but in some occasions, the owners were actually left out for various reasons, nothing intentional. But the law didn't require that the owners specifically be notified, so the new law requires that. The new law requires that all zoning-related legal ads run between, they've got two standards now, and it's become a little bit confusing when this board makes a zoning decision, or what the courts call a legislative decision, that has to be advertised 15 to 45 days out. However, when this board makes a quasi-judicial decision, which is kind of what you did today with the land use permit, that only has, that has to be advertised 30 to 45 days out. What we've done in our proposed ordinance is basically made it 30 to 45 days across the board for any proposed changes, whether they be legislative zoning in nature or quasi-judicial. Those are very confusing terms, and I understand the courts have become confused by it. So the General Assembly has spelled out what's legislative zoning, what's quasi-judicial. Quasi-judicial is when you look at a set of facts, and you look at a set of factors, and you apply the facts to the factors, and then you make a recommendation. That's quasi-judicial, as opposed to changing the underlying zoning of land, which the General Assembly construes as legislative in nature, as well as the courts. So regardless, your notices are all going to be 30 to 45 days out. It requires that the same notices go out, whether it's land use permits, special use permits, rezoning applications, variances, waivers, or text amendments. Under this new law, all that is supposed to be all the same. So we're amending our ordinance to make sure that those notices, whether they be by signs or whether they be by letters, that those notices all are uniform now. If you lose your zoning case, there used to be a very archaic procedure for appealing called applying for a writ of certiorari. All right? The courts are tired, and the General Assembly is tired of people getting confused by it and stepping on landmines and having the substance of their appeals blown up because they didn't follow a procedure. Now, I, as an attorney, I kind of like those landmines because it makes my job a little bit easier, but now the General Assembly has eliminated all that, and all appeals will be brought by what they call a petition for review. And the standards are set out, and we've got to make sure that our procedures conform with that. Finally, one of the things that I did want to mention that is outside the two House bills is the expectation that when an applicant is represented by an authorized agent, that when they appear in front of you, that authorized agent is expected to have the authority to either agree with stipulations or to object to stipulations. As I've watched it over the past few years, I've noticed that sometimes a representative will appear, and they perhaps appear less than capable of representing whoever they're supposed to be in here representing, because you may ask them a question, and they say, "Well, I'll have to check back." Now, you're their representative. We expect you to be able to answer on their behalf. Otherwise, we'd ask that the applicant be present. And that's just a requirement that sets out what y'all's expectation is where a representative is going to appear instead of the owner, the applicant. Any questions about those things before I defer to Ms. Lippman?
I see some good pros and cons in that, because I could see if there were multiple owners of a piece of property that didn't know that, you know, something was being zoned that they might or might not approve of, that I think that part is good, but there are, of course. Anything in a legal aspect like that, it's, things change, and maybe this is good changes.
Apologize in advance for my voice, but I'll go over the remainder of changes that we're recommending with this text amendment. Anytime we have a chance for a text amendment, I always like to correct some errors. We did find a few, so we've made those changes. We also, we've noticed, as we just adopted this new U D O last March, and as we get in and use it, every once in a while, we noticed that we left some things out. So some things that we have added to this, we realized that we did not make provision for event venues, whereas in the past, they were special use permit, Chris? And we have several event venues, so we have added event venues as a special use permit in A1, R2, or AB, which is the agricultural business zoning district. We also realized that we did not provide for crop production in the agricultural or agricultural business zoning district, so we have added that as permitted uses. In our previous zoning ordinance, we had kind of a catch-all use in I1, which was any industry which does not cause injurious or obnoxious noise, vibrations, smoke, gas fumes, odor, dust, fire hazard, or other objectionable conditions and which conforms to all applicable state and federal regulations, and have been permitted by all state and federal regulatory bodies. When we converted from the old zoning ordinance to the U D O, we tried to catch everything, and again, while using the ordinance, we realized there were some, because we had this catch-all district, that we had some manufacturing uses that didn't get put back into the U D O. So myself, Mr. Robinson, and Michael Hughes with Economic Development, we took a morning and we looked at the North American Industrial Classification System, and we looked at the manufacturing uses that we felt met this category, and they've been inserted into either I1, R2, or advanced manufacturing logistics. And those are electrical equipment and appliance and component manufacturing, fabricated metal product manufacturing, machine shops, turn product and screw nut and bolt manufacturing, machinery manufacturing, millwork, miscellaneous manufacturing, miscellaneous wood product manufacturing, plastics and rubber manufacturing, resin, synthetic rubber, and artificial and synthetic fibers and filaments manufacturing, textile mills, leather and allied product manufacturing, and printed and relating support activities. So we are adopting definitions for all of those uses, and all have been inserted as either a permitted special exception or special use permit in I1, I2, and AML. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the board or the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like, has a comment or has questions about this speci, this text? Seeing none? We should take a vote on this, right?
It'll be a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a vote on the Honored Ordinance Text Amendments? This, since this is a public hearing, is a public hearing, and they want a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners?
I make a recommendation for approval.
Approved by Mr. Ashton? Seconded by Mr. Henson? Okay, seconded, and do I have a vote? Okay, that's going to be three, zero, and one for approval, and it will be sent on to the Board of Commissioners at their next meeting to add to their list of things to do. Is there anything else to bring forward to the board today? Does anybody have any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Henson? Seconded by Ms. Fitzgerald. Do we have a vote? Three, zero, and one. To approve, and this meeting is now over. Thank you very much.